Right now.
Mics are on?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the special meeting of June 4th, 2014, Eastlime Town Hall Board of Selectmen meeting to order. If you'd all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First Selectman, Farmica, is on his way back, being stuck in traffic, so we'll start the meeting, and he will join us later in the meeting. First on the agenda, any additional agenda items or consent calendar items? I don't think so. So delegations. Who would like to address?
Somebody wants to speak.
Anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Rando, I guess you're up.
Okay. Right there. Ron Rando, 194, Boston Post Road, Eastlime. I'm going to speak again, but probably doesn't do any good because nobody listens to me anyway, but I'm going to speak. First thing I want to say is I've been doing a lot of investigating on this boardwalk deal down here. I talked to a few engineers and people who have worked on things like this. Now, I don't know if we started it yet, but in the plan, we don't have this. These sheets here, we're not going to have anything hold in them. So what's going to happen over time? Water's going to wash these rocks up because it's gonna, and water's going to come up, and the bottom of these sheets are going to go in, and this is going to come down. Now, we spend a little more money, and we run ties on each one, back this way, and we put a screen mesh over the rocks, back of the rocks, which will help from keeping the rocks from washing out. That's been one of my pet projects for a long time, this boardwalk. If we do this boardwalk the way the plans were, I'm going to guarantee it's going to wash out just like the other ones did. Number two, I'm kind of upset on this, this little guy we got downstairs that brought my name into this deal up in Flanders with the White Gate Farm. I don't know if you boys, if you boys and ladies, or girls and men have read the letter, but I have. And I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but I'm going to read this part. The operation has been annoying him for a long time, and he was ready to shut it down. Mr. Mulholland talking. He mentioned that Ron Rando, owners of Ron's Guns, was a friend of Ben and Ben's business. I'm not a friend of Ben's, I'm a friend of business. And anybody that wants to go in business in this town, that little Hitler down there shuts them down, tell them they can't do it. I'm fed up with it. My name should never been brought in there. Ron is a fellow of strong opinions. Damn right I am. That rarely conform to mine. Plus, I prefer to give gun people a wide berth. Pretty smart answer, isn't it? From the little twerk down there? Like I said, if I, when I ran for first selectman, if I was ever elected, that man's resignation would have been on my desk, number one. Okay? We drive business out of town all the time. Well, I heard today from a good source that Costco was not coming to Eastlime. Why? They're sick and tired of harassment and stuff they have to put up with to come to Eastlime. It happens all the time. The Rustic Inn's got a good little business going out there. They want to put a patio in, outside patio. Can't do it. Put a little addition on, can't do it. We can't help businesses. This town doesn't help business, never has it helped. We lost UPS out there in the industrial park because, well, they couldn't wash their trucks. Imagine all them trucks, you know, paying taxes in the town of Eastlime. Fantastic, would help the town. Mike's famous motorcycle. Have any of you people looked at the building he took over in New London, the Coke Building? The job he's done, what he's got in there, and what he's going to bring in the taxes in New London? Of one person in this town that didn't want it, and then he moved out. It's just like when I wanted the sewer. One person on Pheasant Run, he moved out. Cheated, knocked it down, and wouldn't put it in because of this one guy. Why don't you listen to the people in Eastlime, not one person? Good business, good clean. You know, motorcycle people, lawyers, doctors, they spend a lot of money. And what do we need in this town? We need money, tax money. Number, what the hell was the other one I was going to? No, I got sort of, I forgot what the other one was. Oh. Lost my train of thought. Maybe I'm getting all times, I don't know. There's one other item I wanted to say, but maybe I'll think about it later. But anyway, I wish Mr. Farmica was here. Oh, I know what it is. Okay. My last problem with the town is New England up there, passing me up in Darrell's Ridge. I was talking to a gentleman the other day in the shop, or no, I met him at the post office somewhere. Legal fees are something like $680,000 since we've been having problems there, and now we're getting sued by 13, getting sued for 13 million from the same people. I would like to know if the 680,000 or 650,000 is true, and where does it show that we're paying these legal fees? Are we taking money from other accounts and swapping it around because it doesn't show up in the legal fee account, far as I know? That's an awful lot of money. Where's it going? Where's it coming from? That's what I would like to know. Sorry I raised my voice, but I get really upset about business because we need it in this town. And the last thing I'm going to say is me and a few other people worked hard to get a referendum in this town, and I think it's a disgrace that the townspeople of Eastlime do not come out and vote. You raise a tax mill, six to seven mills, and they'll come out and they'll vote and wish their taxes would go down. It's a disgrace to the town of Eastlime.
Thank you, Mr. Rando. Anyone else like to address the commission, Board of Selectmen? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Come on up. We haven't moved on yet.
She didn't have her hand up.
My name is Susan Welshack, Eastlime High School Boys Tennis Coach, and I'm going to talk about the tennis courts that we would like to have done over, our new courts. We have six courts right now at the Eastlime High School that are in deplorable condition. This season, there's six courts there, we only used five out of the six during our high school season. Been coaching there for, this is my seventh year, and in our conference, there's 15 schools in our conference, and exception of Griswold, we have, Montville, sorry, except for Montville, we have the worst courts out of the 15 schools. The boys have been, and I know the girls as well, have been the Eastern Connecticut Conference Champions for all these years, over 11 years. We play at the state tournaments, we produce high-level tennis players, and we have New England Rake tennis players as well that play on our team. We have a team this year of 24, which actually was not as many. Normally, we have 24 to 35 kids, and between us and Waterford, we have the biggest rosters. They do not cut kids from the team. So we have that many students participating in high school, never mind what the girls also produce. So a lot of kids, and that didn't just start in ninth grade, those kids have been playing prior to ninth grade. Also, besides coaching at Eastlime High School, we had also new courts, better courts, et cetera, we could host more events too. The Eastern Connecticut Conference, we did this year, we did at Waterford High School, and then we had to go to Mitchell College. There was no other place to go even, you know, Connecticut College wouldn't let us use it, plus there's some financial and legal issues there, too. So us also having those courts, we could host other events for the high school boys and girls. Outside of high school, I also do the Park and Rec tennis programs, probably for the past seven years as well, and that includes kids from four years old up to senior citizens. So on those courts during the, after the high school season ends, all the way through, it gets cold, probably November, the community's using those courts, using those courts to run clinics, also tournaments, and USTA tennis teams for the juniors. And the past five years, put together junior tennis teams in the summer, and they have gone to the state competition. And also, other teams come to our facility as a visiting team, playing on our courts. And it's to the point where it's embarrassing, and to the point where we can't even probably do that anymore, have opposing teams come to our facility. So therefore, the program is now suffering. We also did adult parent and child tournament for the USTA every year, and every year, we send parents and children, they win their division, 10 and under, 12 and under, 14 and under, 18 and under, and adult. They have gone to New Haven and played in that competition, which is now called the First Niagara, but that was the pilot pen. And out of this community comes tennis players from there. Also, with the kids that are on the high school team, for instance, I have freshmen, but those freshmen have known me much longer because I've been on those courts, always around those courts. We know plenty of parents that come after dinner with their kids to just play tennis. People just have a racket and sneakers, and they want to come to the courts and have something to do after dinner. So the courts are used all the time. A lot of people go over to Waterford as well because they have lit courts there, and so they, you know, leave our community to go there. People used to come from the other communities and also socialize over here, and now we've lost that, too. People have kind of gone away. So our facility's in really bad shape. I do apologize to people coming there and to coaches and to players because it's, you've got the state-of-the-art students, state-of-the-art schools, state-of-the-art athletes, and we're producing these athletes, and now they're at this facility. And any other questions, I'd be glad to answer. Oh, also, the National USTA recognized Eastlime, too. Last year, they did a big article on me, and it said, "Small shoreline town of Eastlime." That went national, that went global, that was all over that, and it talked about, you know, the programs we have in the facility. They don't know what the condition is in, but, you know, they were saying, you know, this small town has a lot to give to everybody. And again, it was from, it's three- to four-year-olds all the way up senior citizens, you know, are on that court, and it could be used even greater if we had good conditions. It'd be a fantastic, fun, fitness, athletic place.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, and thank you for your dedication and passion to the youth of Eastlime. Appreciate that. Yes, sir?
My name's Tom Foley, 43 Webster in Eastlime. A few years ago, I was an assistant coach with the girls at the high school. One of the responsibilities we have, while we do the training, they point out, is we have potential personal liability if we do not perform our duty to maintain safe playing conditions, and that means pointing out unsafe, potentially unsafe operations. A few years ago, we did reach a point where I felt it was unsafe, and I did bring it up, went to a town meeting, and the town was very good about that. They responded very quickly and got the repairs done at the end of that year before the next season came along. But the repairs that were done were temporary, and it's been recognized for quite a few years, the courts are going downhill, they get worse every year. The repairs that were done were to get us a few years' protection, and I think they did that, but if you go down, you can see where some of the repairs are already in pretty bad shape, and I think you've got one to three years before somebody else will be in the position that I was in to make that decision. So again, I want to point out that there was, there has been a long-term plan for those courts, and it generally gets bumped for some other reason, but we're getting to the point where even the temporary fixes are going to be more and more difficult and more and more expensive. So I'd strongly recommend, we need, I've heard a number of different proposals, I'm not sure which is before the board at this point, but we need good courts, we need the drainage situation, which has contributed to a lot of the cracking and deterioration, addressed, and we need adequate fencing down there. And if there are other things that make it better, wonderful, but at least that we need for a long-term fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Are we sure? No one else? Okay. We'll move to the approval of the minutes of May 21st, 2014.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 21st, 2014, as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion that's been seconded. Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Or abstention.
And all abstain as well. So 3-0-2. Consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of June 4th, 2014, in the amount of $8,673.91.
And it's been seconded. Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And that's a 5-0. Okay. We have a presentation this evening before we get into the meat of our meeting. Mr. Potnam, are you coming up to make that?
I'm going to come up with Mr. Kestner.
Mr. Kestner.
Chairman of the Eastlime Sports Hall.
Fantastic. We want to get you on microphone so everybody at home can hear and see you as well. That one there is perfect.
Good evening.
Evening.
A few years ago, Sam Paritz and I thought that that would be a good idea. We spoke to Mr. Tobin, but it took us time to start it, like, two, three years ago, we seriously started thinking about, because football has Hall of Fame, basketball has some, baseball, whatever, but we want to have one for our town, for coaches, volunteers, players. And we have quite a discussion who should be in. Not everybody could go at once. We tried minimize to four, but by talking, we added three others for first one, and was a very good group. Bob Tobin, Dave Potnam, Jeff McNamara, Jeff Provost, Judy Deves, Roger Naddoo, and our young man there that did most of the work and his treasurer, he take care of money. Thanks, Dave. And I thought we had good selection, we had, gave everybody plaques, and they have got together, and then we put it, I talked to first selectman, and we tried to put plaques in town.
I think if you just turn around, just, yeah, just turn around, yep, right where you're at. We want to put that on the TV somehow. Right in front of the, right in front of the. That just, if you stay right there, I'll get it out there. Yep.
Judy De, Scott Naddoo, gymnast, Elizabeth Parker, excellent, exceptional coach, one best athlete, I think, in women's sports in Eastlime so far. She's now working out for, you know, John McDonald, you know him, he's still playing in cross. Richard, Rick, Charles Dick North, you all know him, Jim Lederfield, and Sam Paritz. Judy De, you know her accomplishment, and young man Scott Naddoo, who was a very, very good gymnast, an accomplished gymnast. So that was our first group of people, and we go every two years to pink him, maybe four or five new people. So wanted those people to be recognized and thanked on for their work. Were you able to do that?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do I do it to you?
I want you to just lay it on the table right there. Yeah, that'd be great.
And we thank, we have lots of people in Eastlime that buy the money sponsored, and we thank those.
So we have seven inductees into the Eastlime Sports Hall of Fame, our first inaugural season, and there'll be more to come, for sure, with all the people who are dedicated to our youth in town.
We solicit names, resumes.
Why don't you get on the microphone, just so.
We solicit names, resumes, everybody are welcome, and it's really joy to see these people when they receive an award. It was great, they are all very accomplished people.
It's very good that you took the time to do this, and your group thanked them on behalf of the entire town. These people certainly deserve it.
And Mr. Tobin was very good help. Wish he was here tonight, I don't think, I'm not sure. Did you contact them? Yes, we did. But again, Dave did lots of work, and we, thank you all.
Where are we going to, where are those going to hang?
I'm not in charge of town hall.
I think it's going to be in the town hall. You're not? I didn't know you weren't.
It'll be one here and one in the community center.
Thank you. One here and one in the community center. We have a duplicate.
Yes, it'll be in the community center.
But we want to, we want it to look professional, and we didn't want it to seven, you know, individuals, so we want to make it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something?
Yeah. I got. I attended the dinner, and it was a lot of fun. Families got to see their loved ones, parents, grandparents, or sons or daughters recognize. It was a very nice event for everyone, too, and especially since we got to see John McDonald, who brought home a World Series ring this year as a member of the Red Sox.
Yeah, it's awesome. That's a good point.
We have to.
That was, I'm just plugging the Red Sox there, that's all.
We have to thank our people in town that gives this town so much.
Indeed. Thank you again. Thank you for your service on that committee.
Thank you, Milan.
Next on our agenda is a presentation discussion of the Niantic River Headwaters Preserve, formerly known as Girli Brook Preserve. I think Mr. Harney is making that presentation?
I'm going to start it.
Okay.
Steve Harney, 20, I land a court. I am the managing member of KSK Associates LLC, which is the owner of approximately 200-acre parcel in the town, and if you'll refer to that map over there, I think I'll highlight it and run from the mic for a minute. This is a map.
Yeah, why don't we put you on Mr. Wilson's mic, then? If he's going to come over here. We definitely want to put this on tape.
This, this map here is actually a blown-up copy of the map.
Do you want to just bring it over there so we can sit?
No, I'll, let's see.
You want to pull it over there, Mark?
Yeah, it's so easy to move. You can just stand there and do the whole thing. Then my picture doesn't have to be on there. No. It's called open space.
Eh, sort of. I'm new at this, sorry.
You're as bad as I am at operating.
Wow.
Good job.
It's so user-friendly.
Yeah, that's good. That's not bad.
Do you see it?
How's that?
No, it wasn't.
All right. Let me just identify this parcel. This is a copy of your Land of Unique Values map that was put together by the University of Connecticut for your plan of conservation and development. These other two maps, I'll just thumb through. This is your open space vision plan that was put together by your Natural Resources Commission, that was a vision plan of open space and walking trails in town. This particular copy is actually, goes back to 2010, and a letter was sent to the LLC, the partnership, in May of 2010, and it had a copy of this map, identified at that point 64 parcels that were privately owned, that were in the vision plan for the town of Eastlime. This particular parcel is right here, it was number 24 on their list of 65, and it's this parcel here in, I flunk kindergarten, what is that, Magenta? That particular piece is identified as a key preservation type 1 opportunity that was identified by your Land of Unique Values. So I believe this was presented to you at your commission before as the Girli Brook Preserve. We've renamed it the Niantic River Headwaters Preserve at the suggestion of Alicia Sullivan, who used to be Alicia Betty from the Trust for Public Land. She just thought it would be more indicative of the intent and certainly the issues that relate to water quality, aquifer protection, and the like. Yeah, what I wanted to do is just give you a brief history. What I'm going to do is turn it over to Whitney Beals, who is actually here from the New England Forestry Foundation. They're located in Massachusetts. Tomorrow, coincidentally, they celebrate their 70th anniversary, and I believe they have, what is it, with a million 200,000 acres under conservation and sustainable forest management. But the history of this was, we received a letter back in 2010 encouraging us to come to, it was tri-signed by the first selectman. At that time, it was Mike Bowers, the chairman of your planning commission, and Art Carlson, the current chairman of the Conservation Natural Resources Commission. And it really didn't obligate anybody to it, but it encouraged us to come forward, or any person that was on that list of 64, if they were interested in selling the property, to contact Gary Geishell, Paul Farmica, or any of the undersigned. To which we started to entertain and thought it was a good idea, and really started to explore some of the open space opportunities. To kind of fast-forward forward, there's some grant programs out there, and I think that it's been discussed with you also. The state of Connecticut has what's called their Green Plan, and that's their, they have a goal to put 21% of our state into open space by the year 2023. That equates to about 675,000 acres. Their vehicle to help fund that through towns, municipal water companies, or 501(c)(3) land trusts, those are the only qualified applicants. The Open Space and Watershed Protection Land Grant Program is what it's called. That's their vehicle to put grant money up, to have it matched by towns, private philanthropic foundations, or philanthropic individuals. So at that time, the Eastlime Land Trust, I think you know, had lost its tax-exempt status for no fault of anyone, but they were no, you know, they weren't no longer in good standing as a 501(c)(3). So a land trust was formed to be a qualified applicant, and we received a $500,000 grant, which was the highest awarded grant by the DEP, and now it's December of 2012. At this point, we're approaching the town, and I think you're all aware, we, part of our grant application had letters of support from, I think, all the pertinent commissions, it was Inland Wetlands Planning, Natural Resources, your board, SCOG, and the Niantic River Watershed Commission, which is a commission formed by the DEP, and it's primarily, its goal is to enhance the water quality in Niantic River, Niantic Bay, Long Island Sound. At this point, we were under contract with the Woodsmen's Land Trust. That contract has expired, and in the meantime, we have talked to New England Forestry about stepping in. I think with a few of you, we've had discussions on how we deal with all the 501(c)(3)'s in town, and I think the future of our open space vision plan is really a public-private partnership. You know, we're going to have to go to the private community to help raise money, and I think if it were up to me, I would suggest that a lot of these 501(c)(3)'s merge so we can really create some savvy boards of director, or one board of directors. so we can really create some savvy boards of director, or one board of directors, a succession plan, and then the ability to tell a good story outside of the town. I think there's, and, you know, I don't want to monopolize the mic here, there's all kind of data that I'm happy to share with you. We've all heard about the cost of community service surveys, which basically say the strategic purchase of development rights, whether it's farms, open space, really saves money for the taxpayers. There's many studies across the country that say every dollar of residential tax is brought in, costs a community a dollar and sixteen cents, commercial, industrial. To kind of piggyback off Ron back there, that's what grows your grant list and doesn't really put too much burden on your services. I think Wit may get into, there's some great studies done by the Trust for Public Land that talk about the economic benefits of open space in a community. You know, we all love our town, we got beaches, we do have open space, walking trails. You know, it's that kind of quality of life that I think draws people here, supports property values. But the driving force behind a lot of this is water. We know water's been an issue in our town. We're embarking on the regional water connect, but water quality, the water quality in Niantic River, Niantic Bay. You know, our hope is to present this to the town. Clearly, I think it should be reviewed, maybe we should have some workshops to educate the residents. You know, my belief is that the taxpayers in this town, it's their money. And I don't know if you recall, back in two thousand and seven or eight, we had a community survey done. We're somewhere in the vicinity of eighty-five to ninety-two percent of the respondents strongly agreed with protecting large forest blocks, hiking trails, water quality. I ran some quick numbers on bonding. I know it's not the purview of your commission to get into whether something is affordable. But the long-term cost of bonding and purchase in open space, I think, is insignificant compared to the potential costs of having it developed. I just pulled an article out about the increase we had in water and sewer rates last November. After talking to Belinda in the water department, I think we have sixty-eight or sixty-nine hundred water users in town and thirty-five hundred sewer users. And that increase alone, and I know we got to maintain the infrastructure, and water's been an issue, but it translated to the median user of spending twenty-two dollars a year increase in just water. If they were a water and sewer user, it came out to forty-eight dollars for the sewer, twenty-two for the water, so it's about seventy dollars a year increase. I'll share with you the math, but if we were to bond this at today's current rates, it comes out to about two dollars and fifty cents a year per median-valued house in town. So over a twenty-year bonding period, it would cost the taxpayer fifty dollars over twenty years. It would be paid off in its entirety, you know, to be in open space in perpetuity with walking trails on it. You know, all the environmental pluses, sustainable forest management, carbon sequestration, water quality, and the like. But I did want to at least introduce Wit. It's, you know, we've changed gears on bringing in, I think, an organization that's more equipped for the long-term stewardship of this particular piece. And I think the town, as we embark on our vision plan, if we're successful, we're going to need some savvy organization with volunteers that's going to be able to manage our open space. You know, similar to the Darropon piece. That said, I'd like to introduce Wit Beals to you. I'm certainly happy to answer any other questions you guys may have. I appreciate the time. As usual, I've gone over.
Thank you, Steve, and it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Whitney Beals, I'm the Director of Land Protection for the New England Forestry Foundation. We're probably a new name on the conservation list for most people in this room. But we are celebrating our seventieth anniversary tomorrow at our annual meeting. We, over the years, have acquired about one-point-one-million acres, a little bit more than that, almost one-point-two-million acres of conservation easements, most of those in Maine. We also own twenty-six thousand acres in a hundred and fifty different forest management units scattered across New England. Four of them are here in Connecticut, about seven hundred acres total. We also hold conservation easements on another nine-hundred-and-fifty acres here in Connecticut. All of the properties that we own, we manage as demonstration forests to show other woodlot owners, whether they're municipal or private, what sustainable forest management's all about. I mean, if you look around this room, there's a lot of sequestered carbon in the wood trim in this room right here. And to the extent that that wood can come from locally managed forests, we are actually helping reduce the carbon footprint versus importing those kinds of materials from somewhere else. So all of our properties, all twenty-six thousand acres, are under a green certification, which means we've got a third, independent third-party looking over our shoulders in addition to state agencies, on how we manage those lands. Forest FSC is Forest Stewardship Certification, and I think it's the Rainforest Alliance that's actually the certifying agency. Steve approached me about a year ago, wondering if we might be interested in a, in a nice piece of forest land here in Eastlime, Connecticut. And it didn't take him long to convince me that it was an important parcel for the town to protect. I came down here late last summer, had a good walk on the property, and realized pretty quickly that there's some good forest soils out there, and the tree cover is extensive, almost complete, and with a lot of good, mature growth out there, quite diverse, not too many problems with invasive species yet. So Steve said, "Gosh, could you, the New England Forestry Foundation, play a role in acquiring this?" And I said, "Well, we'll talk about it internally." And I did that with cohorts in the office, and we're willing to move ahead with the project here. We see it as an anchor parcel for what could become a larger assemblage of protected properties. I've talked to one other landowner who's very interested in putting conservation easements on his land, he's somebody known to you. I understand there's some ownership unknown parcels that are nearby. And to the extent that we can connect the dots, as it were, connect properties so that there's a whole string of them that are contiguous, and we can create a larger preserve, which would do more to protect the headwaters of the Niantic River system. This parcel alone is an important parcel for that purpose. There's more than one forest ecologist who recently has stated that probably the most important product of our protected forest lands in the northeast is clean water. And we manage all our properties so that they have, they don't have any negative impacts on water systems that are contained in them. So I think it's a good project, it'd be a tremendous bargain for the town, it would move you one significant step forward in getting towards your stated open-space protection goals. And we're happy to play a role in the project. Any questions? I've got some materials I can leave about our organization, in case you're interested in looking into who we are.
I think that'd be helpful. Questions?
Yes, so on the parcels that you, as the trust owns, are you harvesting the wood and replanting? What goes on in terms of the sustainability?